Audience tonight.
There it is.
Okay, good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody and open the Wednesday, October 9th, 2024, regular meeting of the Palm Springs Planning Commission to Order. Can I have a roll call, please? Chair Wermick.
Present.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Rotman.
Here.
Commissioner Morell.
Here.
Can we have a report on the posting of the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair. The agenda was posted here at City Hall and online in accordance with the city's policies and procedures by nine o'clock PM on Thursday, October 3rd.
Okay, and the next item is the acceptance of the agenda. Does anybody have any issues with the agenda as it is? Can I get a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We're in public comment, and the item before us is a public hearing. Okay. This time's been set aside by members of the public to address the Planning Commission on Consent Calendar and Other Agenda Items and items within our jurisdiction. Please note that we're prohibited from taking action on an item not listed on our posted agenda. Each speaker will have three minutes. Members of the public who would like to consent on the consent or new business items are directed to comment under this portion of the agenda. If you are here on the public hearing item, you can comment now or when that item comes up. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak?
Madam Chair, I believe the members in the audience are here for the public hearing. There is one member online. If you are watching online on the Zoom and would like to speak now on a non-agenda item or a consent item, please raise your hand. Madam Chair, we have no speakers at this time.
Thank you. There being no speakers, the public comments section is closed. The next item in front of us is the consent calendar. Are there any issues on the consent, on the approval of the minutes of September 25th? Yes?
I've got a comment on the minutes on page two, item 2B. There was a, looks like a typo about midway down regarding the name of the building consultant. I don't know which is correct, but in one section, it's a B, in one section it's a G for the gentleman's name. So if you could just clarify that. And then more importantly, on the added conditions, number two, we, you know, as you know, we labored over those conditions quite a bit. And number two says inspections of mechanical equipment shall be required, blah, blah, blah. I think there needs to be a statement in there that it's inspections of mechanical equipment for the purpose of evaluating any odor control deficiencies specifically.
I would agree with that.
Just to clarify what we're looking for there, obviously. It's odor control, so with that, I'm fine with the minutes.
And Commissioner Miller, I do believe the condition as approved read something closer to that, so we'll just, we'll just make the mirror.
Yeah.
So with that, is there a maker of the motion to accept?
I'll move the consent agenda with the minutes.
Second.
And both.
With the changes.
And both of you accept the changes? Can you confirm?
Accept the changes.
Can you call the roll, please? Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Chair Wermick?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rotman?
Yes.
Commissioner Morell?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is public hearing. It's a request by Windtech Energy LTD owner for a tentative parcel map 38933 requesting to split one vacant larger parcel of 56.46 acres into two parcels. Parcel one will be 19.62 acres and parcel two will be 36.83 acres for the purposes of future development consisted, consistent with the uses listed in the E1 Energy Industrial Zone located on APN 666 320026 at 18th and Karen Avenue. Can we have a staff report, please?
Thanks, Madam Chair. We'll wait for the presentation to come up. There we go. So as you mentioned, this is a tentative parcel map. Maybe it's not on. Sorry, technical.
To the control room, if you could advance the slide, our, my card.
So, thank you. So this is an aerial photograph showing the location of the subject parcel. So this is at the north end of town. You'll notice that the interchange for Interstate 10 and North Indian Canyon Drive is at the bottom right of the slide. The McLean Industrial Tract is just north of there, and North Indian Canyon Drive goes to the street, and I don't have my pointer, I can't point it out, but the, the street that goes east to west above the industrial park is 19th Avenue, and then farther up Indian Canyon Drive is 18th Avenue. And in the red boxes, this shows the larger overall parcel that is 56 acres that will be split into one parcel of 36 acres and the other parcel of 19.2. So parcel one is the smaller parcel at 19.62. Can we go to the next slide? So the parcel, as I mentioned, is to split into two lots. The parcel is zone E1 Energy Industrial, which allows uses such as windmills, warehouses, any kind of industrial park use. And once again, you'll see listed the acreages of the parcels one and two. We could advance again. In your packet is the tentative parcel map, and this shows the exact lot split. As I mentioned, to the very top of, of the parcel map is 19th Avenue. Karen Avenue is on the west, and 18th Avenue is on the south portion. And another street called Halleck Road is to the east. This is out in the desert. There is no development. It's vacant. The landscaping is basically crease oat and other sort of scrub plants. There's been no grading on the site. There was windmills at one time, they've been removed. And you can see in this aerial, which with the property lines placed over top of it, that there are some dirt roads and other pathways that are currently there. In one of the conditions of approval, we need to make a finding that easements and so forth will not be impacted by this parcel map. You'll see that there are several easements that run through the parcel, parcel one, and then an easement that's diagonal through parcel two. At this time, there's no development potential proposed. This is solely for the current property owner to sell parcel one. And any kind of development that would occur would be, would need to be in the E1 zone development standards and would return to the Planning Commission. If we could advance again. So a recommendation by staff is approval. In your findings, mention that it is a byright use for the E1 zone with an industrial general plan designation. The, the site is physically suited for future E1 development, once utilities and streets are placed within the area. There's a density of a .5 FAR, and the lot split will not conflict, as I mentioned, with established easements. And currently, we are claiming it as a category exempt, as a minor land subdivision, and no sequel analysis is, is required. So Madam Chair, that concludes my report, and the applicant is here.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Commissioner Morell?
I had a question regarding the roads. There's, there's a contemplation of constructing 18th Road. I think that's the one at the top.
Well, if any development were to happen, 18th Avenue would, could continue to meet with Karen on the very far left of the exhibit.
Yeah. Well, my question is, would they need north-south access as well? The way it's written.
I'm sorry, setback? What?
No, would they need north-south access? The, the extension is of the road that goes east-west.
I can't get it to work. Well, for, for parcel one, if that were to be developed separate from parcel two, parcel one could possibly have access off of 18th Avenue and then another access off of Halleck Road if it were extended up.
Right. Right now, it's just dirt.
It's just dirt. Well, yeah, and there would not be any access to 19th Avenue, which is the street to the south. And that's not uncommon.
Can the control room, sorry that we can't control the slides. Can you go back? I think it's slide two, which is the slide with the, this one. Thank you. Back to the map. Yeah, one more.
No, advance it, one more. That one.
There, this one, thank you. Right, so I, I think, you know, there are ample points of access on, to the, to the properties today and as, as proposed. And when and if any development proposals were to come in for these, these properties, one of the roles of the Planning Commission at that time would be to look at site access and circulation, so they would certainly need to come in with a plan for what additional road access might need to be provided, what internal access might, you know, need to be included as part of whatever they're proposing, and we would need to look at it at that point in time. But from our perspective and as required by the code, there is today ample access to public streets.
Yeah, just kind of following up on, on that question regarding right-of-way. On the north on 18th, it shows a 30-foot, I'm assuming that's sort of a half right-of-way, and this is the right-of-way to the south of what will be the center line of 18th, I'm assuming. But, and it's only at 30 feet, which typically isn't enough for a full road section. And the parcel that's not a part of this map to the west has 44 feet from what I'm assuming is the center line. So am I correct to assume that the additional, whatever it is, 30 feet or 44 feet, is going to come from the north side parcels, which may or may not even come in for a map in the near future? So I guess ultimately my question is, is that 30-foot right-of-way on 18th Avenue going to sufficiently provide access out to Indian Canyon for parcel one? And then it, similar question, I think, for 19th Avenue, which also shows only a 30-foot half-section, which again, if the parcels on either side don't come in, we're going to be stuck with a piece of road.
So should, should a development occur on this parcel, our engineering department would require street dedication to meet the minimum lots or street width sizes based upon the circulation element of the general land use plan. So we would not want a half-built street. They would need to build the full width of the street to handle any kind of development that would occur on that parcel. And if there was some sort of, of agreement with the parcel to the north, whenever that would be developed, that they would end up paying a fair share of what it would cost the developer to build the full length of the street, the full width of the street. That would be decided when any kind of development would come in in the future.
So does that mean there could be only half a street?
In my experience.
In other words, the cities, the city's legal authority would only cover that 30-foot right-of-way, correct? Now, you could get presumably 30 feet of pavement if you didn't do sidewalks, but that, that would go, give you a two-way road, but.
It would be a condition of approval that they build the full width of the street.
Even if it was off their property or off their dedication, so to speak? I mean, there would be no authority for the city to require them to build it on someone else's property, correct?
I think our city attorney wants to speak.
Okay.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Jim Priest, City Attorney's Office. We would get the appropriate dedications to widen the street per the general plan, and we can condition any future development to improve those streets, to provide proper access to and from each parcel as they're developed, per the general plan. So we would be within our authority to require full-width roads to be developed as necessary to provide that access. But again, those would be conditions that would be imposed upon future above-ground development on parcel one or parcel two, not as a condition of this subdivision this evening.
Thank you for that clarification.
Other questions? Mr. Priest, if you stay, I just have two, two quick questions. One is, it's a tentative parcel map, not a track map. Is the procedure with this the same as with parcel maps, is that it goes to city council when it, there's a final parcel map?
That is my understanding of the code, yes. We treat them the same way, so it would ultimately, well, yeah, ultimately it would be finalized out going to the council, yeah.
And then my second question was on the findings that we have to make, and I'm making an assumption that I think it's findings, findings six and seven, and it says the design of the subdivision or type of improvements is not likely to cause serious public health issues. Similarly, on sevens, the design of the subdivision or type of improvements will not conflict with easements. And I'm assuming that we can leave the language or type of improvements in there because we have PLN two, which says we're not approving any development on the site. Is that, because otherwise we would have, we might have an issue with opining on developments that aren't in front of us?
Yes, Madam Chair, you are correct. That is a general finding that it comply to, that it can apply to many different types of subdivisions. There are certain types of subdivisions that the commission's familiar with, where we do require certain street, water, sewer, drainage improvements as a condition of approval of the subdivision map. So sometimes you do have those. This is not one of those in this case. This is a pure, for lack of a better term, drawing of the line, or redrawing of the lines on the map to permit separate sale, lease, or financing, and that's ultimately the applicant's goal here. So in this case, you'd be focusing on the design of the subdivision really more than type of improvements. And as indicated in the staff report and the resolution before the commission, the position of the staff is that it does, the design of the subdivision will not cause a serious public health problem, and it will not conflict with easements or other access rights.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of staff? There being no other questions of staff?
I just have one question.
Oh.
Just a quick question. The last sentence in that paragraph six, is that sentence necessary? Because the prior sentence says the development will have appropriately designed and constructed streets and internal private driveways. I'm just concerned that I don't think 18th Avenue meant that construction. They may need to do, build another street somewhere for proper egress.
I think the objective of saying that is that when future development were to come in to you, we would have to make sure that it has appropriately developed streets, but I understand the point. I, I think that if you wanted to in, in the motion remove that sentence, that would be fine.
Which sentence is that?
Under, under finding number six, it is the second last sentence, beginning on, at the end of line three, which says, "The development will have appropriately designed and constructed streets and internal private driveways built to city standards, providing ingress and egress." It is a little bit odd since there's no development proposal in front of you, so I think.
Right.
I think that that could be removed.
There being, are there any other questions before I open the public hearing? There being none, the public hearing is open, the applicant has 10 minutes, and after which members of the public will have three minutes, and the applicant will have five minutes for rebuttal.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I'm Fred Noble, Windtech Energy. I'm the applicant. I'm here to answer questions if you have any.
Are there any questions of the applicant? Are there any members of the public who wish to speak?
Thank you.
I don't believe any members of the public have, in the audience have, have signed up to speak. There is one member online. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand now, and I will unmute you.
And are you waving your rebuttal? It's, it's a bit of a joke. Thank you. The matter is before the commission. I think we've, we're pretty close to where we would be, which is a motion to approve with the deletion of the second sentence in finding number six.
Second last sentence.
Second to the last sentence, sorry.
No, I thought it was actually removing the last sentence.
Yeah, my, my suggestion was the last sentence, because I think.
The specificity of the last sentence, I think.
Suggests the last.
Makes it seem like that street is all that's necessary, but that's really only one means of egress.
My apologies for misunderstanding earlier. I guess the question is, do you want to remove both of them or just the last one?
I was proposing just the last one.
Okay, so I'm sorry that I complicated that.
It's more specific, and the second and last is more the.
And just for the applicant, I usually would give you a chance to, if you had any comments or concerns about that. Thank you.
If there's no more question?
I was just going to say, on that second to last sentence, what if we change it from the development to any development?
That, that was what I was reading as the problem, yes.
All right, thank you.
And I think it says any future development.
No, it just says any development.
The development will.
Development, yeah. Right, which is, yeah.
So any development will.
With that, I have, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Rotman, were you seconding it?
I second.
Can you call the? Can you call the role, please?
Mayor Wurman.
Yes.
Commissioner Rotman.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Morell.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Moving right along. I love this agenda. We have no unfinished business. We have no new business. Planning Commission reports, requests, and comments. I have one, which is that we, we need to have a Christmas party for planning, planning commission, architectural review, HSPB, and staff. And is there any day in December that does not work for anyone here? Is anybody going out of the country? Chris, do you have a date? You usually have a date in mind, don't you?
It's hard to believe we're this far along in the year. I, I am traveling out of the state on December 20th, so I would recommend we do it before And I believe our final meeting of the year is on December 11th. So, I mean, I would, I would propose looking, and there is a council meeting the night of December, of December 12th, so we'll need to avoid that. So I would recommend something early the week of the 16th, either the 17th or 18th, if that seems to be something that doesn't conflict for most people.
And your staff usually wants it on a Thursday night, so that they don't have to come back.
So if we wanted to move it up, I would suggest December 5th, then.
December 5th, okay.
That's a good point, Madam Chair. Thank you for being considerate of those who want to sleep in.
And just to be PC, I think we, this is a Christmas, Hanukkah, and Kwanzaa party, correct?
Holiday party.
Holiday party.
It's an holiday party.
And on December 5th, I am having my surgery, but don't...
Oh, you're not going to...
No, my elbow's getting fixed. I'll be in a sling. Yep, on the 5th.
Will your other arm be able to hold a glass of wine?
Well, I'll be on painkillers.
Painkillers and wine is pretty good.
I have a neighborhood board meeting that night, and I'm delighted to miss it.
And I want to see if anybody, it's usually, has, recently has been at my house. Does anybody else want to do it at their house? You have a house, and someone has a house that'd love to show off?
No.
Okay. We'll go from there. For the members of the commission, you also need to know that we throw this party for the staff, and therefore, you will be asked to either bring or contribute. So, and we'll work, Chris and I'll work out the details. Okay. That's it. Director's report?
Not much, just that, and I've mentioned this a couple times, the appeal of the planning commission's decision on Prescott Preserve will be heard tomorrow night at city council in these chambers. The meeting begins at 5:30. We are the second public hearing item. The first item is a historic designation, so we don't anticipate that taking a great deal of time. As you all are aware, there's a great deal of public interest in this, and there are some very complicated questions around land ownership in the terms of various leases that Oswett has with some of those other property holders and surrounding interests. So it's sure to be a robust conversation, and we'll see where the council lands on the question. The general plan update that you had all approved relatively recently, the consultant has worked through the direction that you had all given them, and some of the various changes that we were looking at. We are just working through the tribe's review of that and probably looking at that going to council on December 12th, which is a little interesting in that it will be, of course, the first meeting of the new council. So that presents some challenges, but that's where we are in terms of calendaring. That is all I have, except to note that the time is 5:58, so I think we have a winner.
Congratulations, Director Hadwin. With that...
I have 5:57 on my...
I think you, I think you still win on that.
I'll take a minute to adjourn.
With that, the planning commission is adjourned until 5:30 Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Director Hadwin. With that...
I have 5:57 on my...
I think you, I think you still win on that.
I'll take a minute to adjourn.
With that, the planning commission is adjourned until 5:30 Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Director Hadwin. With that...
I have 5:57 on my...
I think you, I think you still win on that.
I'll take a minute to adjourn.
With that, the planning commission is adjourned until 5:30 Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Director Hadwin. With that...
I have 5:57 on my...
I think you, I think you still win on that.
I'll take a minute to adjourn.
With that, the planning commission is adjourned until 5:30 Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Director Hadwin. With that...
I have 5:57 on my...
I think you, I think you still win on that.
I'll take a minute to adjourn.
With that, the planning commission is adjourned until 5:30 Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Director Hadwin. With that...
I have 5:57 on my...
I think you, I think you still win on that.
I'll take a minute to adjourn.
With that, the planning commission is adjourned until 5:30 Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Director Hadwin. With that...
I have 5:57 on my...
I think you, I think you still win on that.
I'll take a minute to adjourn.
With that, the planning commission is adjourned until 5:30 Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Director Hadwin. With that...
I have 5:57 on my...
I think you, I think you still win on that.
I'll take a minute to adjourn.
With that, the planning commission is adjourned until 5:30 Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Director Hadwin. With that...
I have 5:57 on my...
I think you, I think you still win on that.
I'll take a minute to adjourn.
With that, the planning commission is adjourned until 5:30 Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Director Hadwin. With that...
I have 5:57 on my...
I think you, I think you still win on that.
I'll take a minute to adjourn.
With that, the planning commission is adjourned until 5:30 Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Director Hadwin. With that...
I have 5:57 on my...
I think you, I think you still win on that.
I'll take a minute to adjourn.
With that, the planning commission is adjourned until 5:30 Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Director Hadwin. With that...
I have 5:57 on my...
I think you, I think you still win on that.
I'll take a minute to adjourn.
With that, the planning commission is adjourned until 5:30 Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Director Hadwin. With that...
I have 5:57 on my...
I think you, I think you still win on that.
I'll take a minute to adjourn.
With that, the planning commission is adjourned until 5:30 Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Director Hadwin. With that...
I have 5:57 on my...
I think you, I think you still win on that.
I'll take a minute to adjourn.
With that, the planning commission is adjourned until 5:30 Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Director Hadwin. With that...
I have 5:57 on my...
I think you, I think you still win on that.
I'll take a minute to adjourn.
With that, the planning commission is adjourned until 5:30 Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Director Hadwin. With that...
I have 5:57 on my...
I think you, I think you still win on that.
I'll take a minute to adjourn.
With that, the planning commission is adjourned until 5:30 Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Director Hadwin. With that...
I have 5:57 on my...
I think you, I think you still win on that.
I'll take a minute to adjourn.
With that, the planning commission is adjourned until 5:30 Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Director Hadwin. With that...
I have 5:57 on my...
I think you, I think you still win on that.
I'll take a minute to adjourn.
With that, the planning commission is adjourned until 5:30 Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Director Hadwin. With that...
I have 5:57 on my...
I think you, I think you still win on that.
I'll take a minute to adjourn.
With that, the planning commission is adjourned until 5:30 Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Director Hadwin. With that...
I have 5:57 on my...
I think you, I think you still win on that.
I'll take a minute to adjourn.
With that, the planning commission is adjourned until 5:30 Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Director Hadwin. With that...
I have 5:57 on my...
I think you, I think you still win on that.
I'll take a minute to adjourn.
With that, the planning commission is adjourned until 5:30 Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Director Hadwin. With that...
I have 5:57 on my...
I think you, I think you still win on that.
I'll take a minute to adjourn.
With that, the planning commission is adjourned until 5:30 Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Director Hadwin. With that...
I have 5:57 on my...
I think you, I think you still win on that.
I'll take a minute to adjourn.
With that, the planning commission is adjourned until 5:30 Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Director Hadwin. With that...
I have 5:57 on my...
I think you, I think you still win on that.
I'll take a minute to adjourn.
With that, the planning commission is adjourned until 5:30 Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024. Thank you.
Wow.